I'm fourteen.
Hello.
Kyle, immediate order. Welcome everyone to the October 3, 2023 Board of Supervisors Work Session. Roll call please.
Mr. Zerema.
Here.
Mrs. Knoll.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Rhoad.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a forum.
Thank you. Okay, the work session today will have a presentation and start off with a proposed New York Code Chapter 18.1 to modify the billing procedures for sewer maintenance. And, Neil.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Teresa Owens, our Finance Director, and Amanda Shannon, who leads our utility billing group, to sit up here and brief you. As your little lead had said, it's been quite a while since we reviewed all of our billing procedures for the sewer ordinance, and a lot has changed. We coordinate with other utilities, we coordinate with other localities, and we have a much bigger sewer operation than when the law was written. And it came into focus when we were working on this Avenity billing update. And so that sort of gave us the discipline to say, if we're going to put this new software into place, we ought to fix utility billing so the new software does what we think it ought to do.
It's just supposed to do.
So I've now completely exhausted my knowledge of this topic.
Well, that's basically the nuts and bolts of it. So we're here tonight to talk about the Chapter 18.1. It is the utility billing code, utility billing as well as dealing with sewer and sewer disposals. So we are, because it's an ordinance change, there is a public hearing on the 17th, so this is trying to get y'all into a little bit of the details of what that public hearing...
Get you in the mood for a public hearing?
Get you in the mood for a public hearing. Yes, sir.
I'd like to point out one thing, though, before we start.
Yes.
Okay, in this discussion, we're not talking about raising sewer rates or anything like that.
Absolutely not. No, that's the first thing.
Make that very clear.
Yes, yes. So, like Neil said, this, we haven't had a real comprehensive look at this chapter of the code since the early 90s, since its inception. So with the Avenity change, the new sewer billing system, we decided to go through this. Not only did finance go through this, these code sections, but also Public Works went through there. So the other thing that's happened over the years is we've had major increases in the number of accounts since the sewer chapter has been put in. Amanda's been here about 19 years doing this, and since she's been here, it's gone from about 16,000 accounts to over 23,000. So we're figuring probably in the 90s, it was somewhere less than 10,000 or so.
Well, that's in the upper county, I take it.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
You should know.
I don't, I don't know. You know, I don't know.
And it's all over.
So you're blaming Amanda for bringing all those extra accounts in?
Yes, I am. She's done such a good job. So we decided, like I said, we decided to go through the entire chapter. So overall, the recommended changes, we feel, are very, very minor. There's some grammatical changes. But the one thing we do want to say, as Mr. Shepherd said, this is not any fee changes. So if there needs to be any fee changes, we'll deal with that in the budget process later on in the spring, but this is really just some administrative changes. So we had some minor grammar changes, we had some minor definition changes, users, non-users was an example. And then the last thing, which is more the most significant one, is a more favorable water suspension terms. So right now...
What does that mean?
I'll tell you. Right now, the way the ordinance reads, if a customer has not paid by the 46 days after the bill, 46 days, you have 30 days to pay, and then 15 days later, we get, we have the ability to cut your water service off.
Ooh.
Yeah. We don't like that, no. So, and then the owner, at that point, has 10 days to appeal it, if they want to appeal it. And then, if they appeal it, the county administrator has to have a hearing, and then he has 25 days, 24 hours, sorry, to render a decision whether we suspend water or not.
Have we ever done that? Do we know? How many times has this happened?
There has been one hearing.
One? One.
Particularly.
Yeah. So, so right now, if we did that, there'd be about 3,000 people that we'd be cutting water off, and we didn't think that that was real practical to do.
So if they're delinquent on their sewage payments, we work with Newport News Waterworks to turn the water off? When you say turn the water off...
Yeah, we can suspend water if they're late, if late on paying their sewer bill.
Or Williamsburg Water, or JCC, depending on...
Whatever, depending on, it's mostly Newport News water for the most part. It's mostly Newport News water. So what we're recommending we do is, with the ordinance change, we're extending the time people have to pay. So we would bill the bi-monthly service on one month, that would be due within 30 days. On about the 45th day, we'd send them a reminder and say, hey, you haven't paid. Okay? On the 60th day, we're going to send out the next bi-monthly bill. And if they haven't paid, that bi-monthly bill will send them a notice to suspend service.
Hang on, just make it clear, you've gone now three months.
Correct.
Okay, it's 90 days.
Correct.
Which is much more in line with what Water Works and HRSD do.
Yeah.
But it's not like when you say 60 days, you're there, there. Just people not following in terms of summation of your number of days. So make sure that you look from the part that we sort of have a problem, the time you actually get to doing things, you know, it's like three months later.
Correct. Correct. It's actually, yeah, four months later by the time we suspend water.
Well, that's, yeah, now you're talking 100 days since it started, okay?
Correct. Yep. So at 100 days, we're going to send you a suspension notice and say, hey, we're going to give you so much time, get your bill paid. And then at 100, on or about 120th day, we'll call Newport News Waterworks, and they'll suspend your water sewer service.
All right, reasonable.
Yeah, and that's about what we, that's what we do now. We usually have maybe about 100 or so folks that do that. And this doesn't, we do have hardship type things, that we do take hardship in payment plans and stuff like that, so that still would be available to customers, but...
And this, I think, to me, is an important footstomp here, is that, you know, we're going down the process, we want you to, we want you to have the water, we don't want to, because there's, could be kids involved, could be all kinds of things, right?
Correct.
So this gives us four months, five months, get down the road with this, and by that time, all through there, you should have taken some action. The county will have taken some action to kind of help you out some way or another. So we're not just in there turning off knobs, but eventually it gets to a point where some people, you know, don't want, they, you got to get their attention.
Correct.
All right.
Correct. So it's, like I said, it's basically more favorable terms than when we actually had in the ordinance. So that's the gist of the ordinance changes, like I said, not real, not a whole lot. We did want to talk a little bit about Avenity and the change. So the program now is called Utility One, it's part of the big Avenity program. We did go live for utility billing on September 25th, and Amanda and her team did a remarkable job and got the bills out on September 29th on a brand-new system. I'm real proud of all them, them doing that. Those hit the bill, that, those hit your mailboxes Friday, they went out Friday, so they should have hit sometime between Saturday, yesterday, today. They are due on the 30th of the month. So in the past, I don't go really fast, in the past, we hadn't sent all customers bills, people who had credits, people who had zero balances, but this time, we sent everybody a bill. One of the reasons why we did that is because every customer is going to have a new account number.
Well, that's going to be fun.
Every customer has a new account number.
And Avenity, explain more, that's a new system that we're using.
It is a new billing system that we're using, and one of the things that it does, it, there's an enhancement, it has a new online portal.
Yes.
Okay? So that's the...
Is one of the reasons why we switched to it?
One of the reasons why we switched to it. The other reason why is that, I think you guys did the billing, and even with the brand-new system, did it in much less time than you would normally do in the old system as well.
Recall that it was...
Efficiencies.
Recall that this was the last piece of the total rebuild of the financial accounting system. We'd previously done, you know, payroll, and accounts receivable, and HR, and purchasing, and so this was...
And financials.
Yeah, this was tax and utilities.
This is the very last piece of it?
Yes.
And it's good to keep repeating about it, remind people.
All right, so, is that it?
Yeah.
You want to talk more? Wait, wait, I'm going to come around. You want to talk more?
I want to talk more.
Okay, Chad, you got something?
My question would be more if there was an inaccuracy, is there a number that someone could call? For example, if someone gets their water suspended on a Friday. Now, I know that we've gone to smart meters, and they can sit in remotely and turn things on and off, but I just want to make sure that there's a way that somebody, if they had a wrongful turnoff, or could talk to somebody, and how would that happen?
I will tell you. Can I say this for one minute? They normally do not cut off on a Friday.
Yeah.
We try never to cut off on a Friday.
Newport News has us restricted to a designated week, and we do all of our cutoffs on Monday to give people plenty of time throughout the week to make that correction on their bill, to make the payment, so we can get the service restored.
So if there is a mistake, yes, they call, call your office.
So here we're talking about cutoffs. Okay, again, this is four months down the road, okay, four months. So by this time, they will have had more interaction, probably with the county staff, than they ever wanted to. So we're not, we're not talking like, okay, here, we're letting you know, and then next week, we're going to cut your water off. By the time you get down here, you're four months down the road with the billing, you're four months down there with the calls, getting letters, you're getting all kinds of stuff, right?
Correct.
All right, so do anybody actually go out to the house?
We have had tags on the pass, but I don't think we've done tags recently.
We do tags where there has been return mail, or we suspect there might be a new customer that we haven't been notified about, but primarily it is, we send a list to Newport News, and they interrupt the service for those people that just haven't paid.
Okay, so if a person, so if a person's a renter, and the landlord hasn't been paying the bill, and so the renter shows up, and it's been at the end of the four-month period, so is the renter all of a sudden going to find themselves without water?
It has happened, in which case, we have asked Newport News restore the service right away, and notified the tenant that, we understand that you're new in the property, we're going to have the service restored for you. The bills have been going to the owner, it needs to be addressed, they need to give us the authorization in order to add you to the account to receive the bills, so that you can pay them.
Okay, and if you get rejection on a bill, let's say a landlord doesn't live in, maybe New York, or out in California, somewhere in the woods, and you've been sending these bills, and you're not getting, you're not hearing anything back, that's kind of a clue that something's not happening, right?
Right, that's why I said if we get return mail on a bill, it'll come back to us if it can't be delivered as it's addressed. So then we will place a tag on the door, so that someone living there will call us before any further action is taken.
Anything else? Well?
Yeah, if I understood what you said, 10th of July, right? And in my area, we generally get our mail by 6:00 PM, late in the afternoon, right? So when I go home tonight and check the mailbox, would I expect to find the bill there? Because I haven't seen it yet.
I hope, I hope so. They were mailed on Friday.
Mine hadn't come out of yesterday, so it's probably coming today.
Okay.
Yes, is the answer. Okay, Steve?
Yeah, three things. You know, Avenity, is that cloud-based service, or are we doing that all in-house?
That is, I believe, we're, Tim is not here, but I believe it's local.
All right, could you ask Tim to confirm that at all? So if it is cloud-based...
He'll text me in a minute.
Yeah, right, I'm sure he's watching. And if it is cloud-based, I'm curious who the service provider is, Microsoft, IBM?
I know it has the capability to go to the cloud, and I know some of the other MUNIS services were anticipating it going to the cloud.
And it could be half and half, too, so I'm just kind of curious where we're going. Second, could you take maybe 60 seconds and explain to everybody watching, in particular, the relationship between the county sewer and HRSD, and what fees are paid to the county versus fees paid to HRSD? Because I know that's murky waters.
I was actually expecting that question. Because, well, it's, if you're not used to it coming from somewhere else and coming in, so you, if you're not, if you're on the sewer system, and you're on the water system, you'll get three bills. You get the water bill from Newport News Waterworks, you'll get a bill from HRSD for the treatment of the sewage, and you get a bill from us for the maintenance of the lines to get the sewage to HRSD.
To their main lines?
To their main, yeah.
And they take care of their trucks?
Yeah, the main lines, they take care of their own individual sewer to their house, yes.
That's a good summary. Last thing, I filled us some questions, and I felt this pain myself. Order from people with sprinkler systems, you used to have the option of subtracting that from your sewage fees. That's stopped a while back. So basically, people with sprinkler systems end up paying for sewer water that gets, that never gets treated, because it never goes to the sewer system, and kind of frustrate for folks that pay that and not getting the service for it. Is that something that the county can take care of, does that HRSD issue? How do, how do we resolve that?
Unfortunately, it is an HRSD issue, because the county sewer maintenance is a flat rate to all of the residents. HRSD has, they get their billing information from the water purveyor. So anything that goes through the main water meter, HRSD is going to bill treatment for. The customer does have the option to install a separate water meter, which is expensive, so that it would be a designated irrigation meter, or for a sprinkler system, so they wouldn't have to pay the wastewater treatment on that. But unfortunately, they did discontinue their submeter program, which is a secondary meter that would allow for the deduction.
We did that for years, and they just up and stopped it, and now they're charging me for treating water they never treat, and hosing tens of thousands of gallons across the county, it's not right, it's not fair.
In some instances, I believe they have had a flat rate program within their billing schedule, that some people have had the option of going to, I'm not as familiar with that process, but it is in their billing schedule, if people wanted to go to that flat rate versus a bill based on usage, if they have a significant amount.
Okay, can't saw that here, but I'm not dropping that.
I would love to see you take this issue up in the future, because HRSD is just one of my pet peeves.
And maybe even address it at the state level, starting next year, too.
Yeah.
Start with the local.
Thank you.
So they, so they don't, but I used to have, when I was on, I called better than anything else, City Water, Water Works Water. So that sub, that submeter is gone now, right? They don't, because we used to, what we do is, we would just call in, in other words, we'd go read the number, and then call it in. And so they've done away with that?
So there were some grandfathered accounts, that people that were actively calling in their submeter deductions, we are still getting those to reduce the sewer maintenance on commercial accounts that are billed based on usage, that we also will reduce their county bill. But they are not enrolling any new customers with a submeter deduction. That is where they would have to get a separate one.
Yeah, there is, there is one way around this, is that you install a well. Well, it costs you about $3,000, $4,000, but you install the well, if you're going to put down much water out there.
But then your side of your house turns brown.
If you don't handle it correctly.
What I remember about that issue from years ago, because a lot of this has to do with how the sewer operators measure flow, and it's through the water utility billing, is that the trend has been away from using potable water for sprinklers. Everybody used to do it, because water used to be really cheap, and water is getting, you know, more and more expensive. So the general trend is more and more people, if they want to water, you know, a shallow well pays.
Shallow well, yeah.
And it got to some point where the cost of measuring all that, and figuring out all that, and dealing with all the appeals and everything, was the number of people using it was getting lower and lower, and the, and the cost of the overhead to keep track of all that was getting higher and higher. That's what I...
I don't know, I don't see a lot of people sinking wells around neighborhoods, I don't see it happening. I mean, they got, they got data, but...
The, well, you, it just, it's there, okay? One of the nice things on the peninsula is that we are blessed with having a lot of basic water underneath us, you know, and so it makes it, we don't end up with a drop in the, in the water level, like they get over in Franklin, when the paper, remember the paper mill was over there, and it would suck down 400,000 gallons of water a day. So, anyway, Sheila, you got anything?
No, I don't.
One question on the billing, the piece that we do, that you were referring to, the county, that's the enterprise fund, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, and so for folks to understand, the enterprise fund is that we're paying the cost of maintenance of our system, all right? That's, that's what it is. It's a separate fund, it's set there that we pay the bills, that pays the system. So when the bill goes up, it's generally because of either manpower or materials, all right? Now, I can't tell you what HRSD does, but they, anyway, they got, we're all under these consent degrees, and it's...
Right, to be fair, a significant amount of their cost increases relate to the consent degree.
Right, it's a consent degree. And what that is, years and years and years ago, because of when it rained hard here, and it was interesting, up in Richmond, the, it would overwhelm, the rain would get into the sewer lines, because they're not closed, you get, the seepage gets in there, and then what it does is it overflows the processors, and then, guess where it goes? Right into the river, and guess where the James River goes? Comes down towards us. And so it ended up with a lot of our, our estuaries, rivers, they're being condemned for oystering and stuff like that, simply because of the raw sewage overflowing right into the, into the system. And so the court came in and said, instead of ordering us to do it, we agreed to a consent decree, basically, it's a consent decree, and what we would do then is start installing these processors and stuff like that. They put like $60 million into the York plant for nitrogen and stuff, just for, just to handle these various pieces. So the system is very expensive, is very, very expensive, and it seems to be working, we're getting there, we're not there yet. Okay, anything else? You did a great job, both of you, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan, Neil. You're up, yeah.
And we'll have you up another 19 years.
Thanks.
I'd like to ask Tim to come and join us at the table. Everybody knows Tim, and he's obviously been the lead staff person in this lengthy comprehensive plan review process. I don't have much to say, other than what was in the memo, that when we all started this, we didn't anticipate COVID, and some other things that have caused the process to go on quite a while. And of course, we've had a citizen committee that you all appointed, who have stuck with us in all these years, and all these meetings, and they're certainly to be praised for their, for their work. Been a lot of staff resources going to it as well, and I thought Chad might want to comment, since he's the board liaison, before Tim starts his presentation.
Four years, over 40 meetings, a wonderful, wonderful group of folks chaired by Michael King, and Monty Johns also chaired it when Mr. King could not be there. Skip Brooks, Lee Hogland, Mr. Moberg, Richard Meyer, Sheila Myers, Jacob Frizio, he was their youth commission representative, and he started out as a middle schooler on it, and ended up as a postgrad. Member who would actually come back during his...
Social Security.
Yeah, now, well, I won't say Social Security, but he did get ARP membership.
He had this wonderful experience with him.
But it was great, and he actually came back on his breaks from school at the University of Virginia, and would come and attend their meetings, which, more power to him. Gene Seltzer and Buddy Spencer were all on that.
Charger.
Charger, excuse me. Great, great group, and really appreciate all the hard work they put in, so I just wanted to say that before we got started.
Hey Neil, what's your gut feeling, if it wasn't for the COVID delays, when do you think this would have...
I mean, in my prior experience, and I think in the prior experience in the county, two-year process is probably about what you would expect. Tim's been through several others, he might have...
It's been typically one and a half to two years. It's basically double the... Okay.
And I just wanted to thank Ms. Knoll for appointing me to this wonderful commission, when she was chair four years ago.
Yeah, and when I first came on the board, I was on the same committee, so I knew it'd be wonderful for you to be on it.
So it was very enlightening.
And I want to correct the name, it's a cheese cider.
Cider.
Yeah, okay, I dumped some acid, sarcher, I'm thinking back on military, the cheese cider.
I didn't do much better with it.
His son, I believe, actually worked for a county.
Yeah, Gene was great, always had a lot to say at the meetings.
What was your attendance like, right?
Mine?
About 50%?
Pretty close to perfect.
You're right. Sure.
We can get you those numbers if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd love it.
Okay, as you all know, comprehensive plan is the long-range plan for the physical development of the county. We're required to have one, we're required to review it, not necessarily update it, but review it at least once every five years to determine if it needs to be updated. This is the fourth update of the original comp plan, which was adopted in 1991. This is the process, as you can see, we're in the home stretch there, with the red box outlined in black. We're into the board of supervisors review, next step would be public hearing, and ultimately board of supervisors adoption. This is the committee that Mr. Green spoke about. We did have a couple people drop off for different reasons over the years. We started out with 14, and finished up with 11, but it was a good group. And we had board appointees from each of the five election districts, as well as representatives from Planning Commission, Economic Development Authority, Youth Commission, Business Community, Real Estate Community, obviously Board of Supervisors, Mr. Green, and two, at the time, deputy county administrators. We did have a total of 34 meetings. First one was way back November of 2018, and we wrapped up this past April. In addition to those committee meetings, where we had briefings, and we brought in subject matter experts from both inside and outside the county, in addition to those meetings, we had four public input meetings at the beginning of the process, and then we had two special land use forums back in September 2021, to get input into the plan. And this is just a few of the topics that were discussed over those 34 meetings, quite a range, anything basically having to do with the county's future, with the county's physical development. The, as I say, the committee wrapped up its work in April, and it was, plan, draft plan was referred to the Planning Commission May 10th. Commission spent about four months in their review. We did have two public hearings, only one is required, but they decided to hold a second public hearing, just to make sure that nobody was left out, everybody got a chance to have input. So we had two public hearings, we also had a work session between the two, so the commission could discuss the comments, and whatever else they wanted to say about the plan. And then September, we actually had some speak, we didn't have a public hearing, but we did have people speak about the plan in the citizen comment period. All in all, we had 22 individuals who addressed the Planning Commission in those different hearings and meetings. And at the September 13 meeting, the commission formally approved the plan, and passed it on to you all for your consideration. And that's where we are today. The comp plan consists of eight elements, dealing with broadband, economic development, environment, historic resource, public facilities, transportation, and land use. The broadband is actually a new addition. The Code of Virginia was amended a few years ago to require localities to address broadband needs in their comp plans, so this is the first comp plan that talks about broadband. The plan also has a, of course, an introduction, there's a section on citizen input demographics, and then there are a couple of glossaries at the end, because there are a lot of jargon, jargonistic terms and acronyms throughout the plan, so it's helpful to have that reference in there. The comp plan is a 300-page document, so for the convenience of those who might not want to read the entire thing, and are only interested in the policy recommendations, we did put together a 39-page summary of just the goals, objectives, and implementation strategies of all the various elements, and between, between that and the future land use map, that's really the meat and potatoes of the plan, again, for people who don't want to wade through the entire 300 pages. Just want to briefly highlight some of the major recommendations in each of those eight elements of the plan, starting with broadband, and I'll give a shout out to Ms. Scroy over here, who was, who wrote the broadband element back when she was a member of the Planning Commission, did a fantastic job. So we talked about expanding the county's dark fiber network. Some county facilities are already connected with lit fiber, including brute and skimming of fire stations, but county-controlled dark fiber will provide more reliable and secure connection.
Can you explain what dark fiber is?
It's genie. Can you explain what dark fiber is?
No, but I mean, put it in the book, you start talking about it, so...
So lit fiber, normal fiber internet is powered by the internet service providers, and dark fiber is powered by the user. So in this case, York County actually sends those light signals through the dark fiber networks to send information to the recipients. That's how fiber in general works, is there...
Won't be even going further on that.
We talked about delivering access to fiber internet in areas that are zoned for business. There are several areas designated for business uses that are either unserved or are served by cable and DSL, and they'd be served better with fiber. Education is a big piece of this. Students require bandwidth capacity for video conferencing, live streaming videos. Of course, during the COVID pandemic, this became a major item of importance. But students need access to computer, and we talk in here about helping them connect with various programs and agencies that can make that happen. Same with seniors. We talk about the growing senior population, and they need access to computer, broadband internet, or telehealth, which is another thing which boomed during the pandemic, and it seems to be coming, could become.
So Tim, how do we ensure that? If we're going to say that we're going to ensure access to broadband, how do we ensure that outside of it's available at the library? I think we're talking about in people's homes, but how do we ensure that?
Well, again, maybe ensure is a little bit aspirational. I don't know if we can 100% guarantee it, but as I say, there are organizations and grant programs that we can help people tie into who don't have the resources. I know the School Division is involved in some of these things as well, and so I mean, that's the goal. It's an objective.
So the county's role is to help facilitate that as opposed to going and providing?
Right, and buy computers, right.
Make sure we can understand that distinction.
And the same with the seniors. And we talk about using Citizen News, libraries, other public affairs venues to disseminate the information about the things that are available.
Well, just, excuse me, Tim, but just to remind the board, you all approved and subsequently had installed through a vendor, 100-strand dark fiber that goes all the way to the north end of the county. Short run, we used it to connect some public buildings, but all that capacity is the closest, I guess, we come to ensuring. It's there, and over time, private internet companies can connect to that or businesses can connect to that. Also, somewhat serendipitously, you know, we had another franchise that we approved in the North County, which has started to provide some competition to Cox and then with...
Yeah, we did the heavy lifting to get the backbone infrastructure, but we're not going to try to do the last mile connection.
Right.
Okay, moving on to economic development. First one on the slide there, maximize economic productivity if they can underutilize commercial sites. We hear it all the time. I'm sure you hear it all the time. Why is so-and-so building a new commercial building over here when there's vacant commercials that's over there? And so we talk in the plan about amending the zoning ordinance to remove obstacles to what we call adaptive reuse, that is taking an old building and converting it to something new. My favorite example is Virginia Beer Company, very successful remake of an old blighted auto garage into a, really it's a community center for that part of the county.
And our fire station.
Our fire station, you know, the Beals, the group hub that I'm told will open one day. You know, it's initiated by the county, you know, and that's part of this whole strategy, you know, trying to get rid of these blighted obsolete sites and trying, you know, to vacant land and/or buildings, you know, to productive use. And we talk in economic development, I mentioned Virginia Beer Company, we talk about placemaking and the idea of attracting and retaining younger workers, through quality of life improvements, expanded housing options. We talk in, the best example that we have in the county right now is the Edge District up there, Second Street, Merrimack Trail, which is, seems to be adding new amenities just about every month, it seems. And we talk about promoting the formation and expansion of home-based businesses. We have so many home occupations, home-based businesses in the county. It's really one of our strengths. It's been one of the priorities of the EDA, and so there are a lot of things we could do. We could, we can promote coworking facilities. We could even, you know, help coworking facilities be developed. We can change the zoning ordinance to make it easier to do home-based businesses where there's no, you know, negative impact on the, external impact on the surrounding neighborhood. And then last on this slide, we talk about originating a study to identify industries and companies to target in the next water year. There's a ton of underutilized infrastructure out there, and this really came from the Economic Development Office, but the idea is to leverage the infrastructure to promote economic development, since that is our heavy industrial base out there, and it's really not being put to its full potential.
Tim?
Sir?
The time I spent so far in this chapter, a couple of things I really haven't seen, touched upon too heavily. One is, and you talked about it a minute ago, is nurturing our, you know, our home-based young business, small business community, because about two-thirds of our business licenses are home-based businesses. And I think there's a real opportunity here where the Economic Development Office can look for opportunities where those people, as they start to bridge the gap between, I might grow my home, but I'm not big enough yet for a brick and mortar, you know, building co-opted, maker space type communities and spaces. I think that's a real opportunity here that we can afford folks and see growth in business like that if we can help with that. The second thing, I think a big thing in the next decade or so is what I'm going to call redevelopment. We've got a lot of older shopping centers and so forth that could use facelifts and so forth, make them more modernized, and I think that's something the county should be championing as well. But I don't really see that touched upon in the plan.
Well, I think it's discussed, both of those are discussed at length in the Economic Development. We talk about coworking facilities, kind of what you're saying, you know, the bridge between home-based businesses and your own brick and mortar establishment. I think at the library, we're kind of doing stuff like that, you know, making space available for burgeoning small businesses.
Right, right. It's talked about, but I'm like, what is the plan to, how the county is going to get involved to help facilitate that? I know the chapter talks about it, but how do we facilitate? What can we do? That's kind of, I want to kind of get in the nuts and bolts of...
Well, you know, let me give them a good example, okay? Years ago, when we were looking at Route 17 as our main street, what we did is we funded a certain amount, I think it was like quarter of a million dollars, something out there like that. And then we got the citizens, they formed a committee, and then what they would do is they would issue grants. And a lot of the businesses got, you know, people go to businesses that look good, right? So we were trying to do things like, you know, put plannings and, you know, stuff like that in front of the junkyards, but then we went down to some businesses and they refurbished the whole outside of the buildings. And then, you know, then we are economic development. So we've given the grants, and you still see those that have been used today, great ones, right down nearby where Sherman Williams is right across the street from that. Another was the, let's see, what we do, we did the grants, and then the idea that we were trying to promote businesses that go in there. I always like use Orianna and Lakeside Drive is a good example in your district, where it used to be dead. All four of those districts, these being corners there. We had like a Pizza Hut and some other gas, they all had gas stations and they were just, and now it's taken 20 years, but now we've got all four of them developed. Starbucks Danners got a great business going. So those are the kind of things that we have done through our economic development agency.
And also, I mean...
And working with the Chamber.
The Economic Development Office really championed home-based businesses and has worked very closely with people who wanted to start their own businesses, and that's why it has grown, because we provided them the assistance that they needed to get going. So it's a combination of home-based businesses and commercial businesses that makes us what we are.
And what I was talking about is bridging that gap from growing out of the home-based businesses, because that could be a big lift for...
That's a huge, that's a huge lift. You're right. But that would all come under economic development, and they do work with the home-based businesses if they want to expand.
Our Chamber...
Then they'd find them a place.
Our Chamber also has a program right now in their current space.
Their incubation.
The incubation where they allow people to come in and use it and create an office that if they don't have an office somewhere else, this is a chance to grow outside that building. So, and then there's a point, there's actually businesses that do that, that actually provide that same service. And then there's a point where, you know, how deeply do you as a government get involved in business? Because business is an investment, right? I mean, it's an investment by the person to take a chance. We're not necessarily in the business of bracing up every business.
Not, no, certainly not. But also it is beneficial to the county if businesses grow in a good way. It helps take, we see increased tax revenue for that, takes tax burden off residential. So we also don't want to just ignore it either. Just kind of find that happy medium, so.
Well, 32% of our operational revenue comes from business tax. So, you know, that's a way of, why you want to be pro-business when we can't. Okay, Tim, this is one thing, you're back going to environment, right?
Yes.
Okay, this is a great, what is this, chapter, page 45, this chart right here on the hotels. You know, a lot of people don't realize how many hotels that York County has. I think we have more than J.C. County and Williamsburg, you know, right in York County. And if you look on here, this shows how the revenue from these businesses now, it shows hotels and other accommodations, $94 million, okay? And you can see the drop in 2020, when it went from 85, 85.3 in 2019 to 37. That was a heck of a drop in that one year. And then it jumped back up from 37 to 76 million, and now today is high as it's ever been since 2012. So this book's got a lot of good stuff on economics in it.
Okay, moving on to environment. One of the things we talk about in terms of air quality is electric vehicle charging stations. We've done some of that here in the county. We talk about doing more of it, maybe not necessarily having the county provide large numbers of charging stations. But a piece, a large piece of a lot of these goals and objectives is regulatory. I was talking with one of the planners over in Development Services, and he'd been contacted by somebody who was interested in adding EV charging stations in their parking lot. We realized we really don't provide for this in the zoning ordinance anywhere. And so that's something we're going to need to do, is bring our ordinance up to date to provide for some regulations about these charging stations. And another thing that came out of the committee was a recommendation that for major commercial projects like shopping centers, developments, adding a requirement that they provide a certain number of charging stations for the customers.
And this is in the future?
In the future. So that would be, that would require a change to the zoning ordinance.
So Tim, before you get away from that, talk more about what you envision the ordinance needing to change to accommodate charter stations. What do you think?
Well, in this particular case, he was talking about a convenience store and, well, a convenience store with gas pumps. And we were just trying to discuss how we would address that if they came in with, and wanted to submit a site plan. You know, would we count the, if there are charging stations in existing parking spaces, would we count that against their parking requirements? Would we require, would we consider an expansion, you know, like for a gas station, if you were to double the number of gas pumps, that's something that would have to come to the Board of Supervisors for approval. You know, would we, you know, we have, would we treat EV charging stations the same way? There are a lot of issues that need to be thought about.
I see, okay, I see where you're going, yeah.
At least, our lawyer would probably have to get in the middle of that.
He'll be in the middle of all of this.
He's looking forward to it, I guess.
He's looking forward to it.
Okay, we talked about investing in public safety infrastructure and equipment for major storm event response. As you all know, everything that's in the CIP has to be consistent with the comp plan. And as part of that review, sometimes we had to stretch to find a comp plan goal or strategy that actually justifies some of the projects in the CIP. So I thought it was important to put something in there here specifically about this issue because a lot of our CIP has to do with emergency services, 911, et cetera. I mentioned, well, I don't think I mentioned it, but since we adopted the last comp plan, the Code of Virginia has been amended to require comp plans in Hampton Roads to address sea level rise. So we have, in fact, you mentioned Jacob, he wrote a good portion of the section that deals with sea level rise. That was a big area of interest for him. So we talk about the different types of strategies. Basically, they fall into three categories, adaptation, protection, and relocation. Few examples, we've got revenue sharing money to elevate section of Seaford Road that's flood prone. We have a couple of other sections that we need to look at doing that as well, and those are discussed in the plan. Some of you may recall years ago when we rezoned some of eastern Seaford from rural residential to resource conservation.
Resource conservation, yes.
In order to minimize or reduce the vulnerability just by limiting the density out there. The entire rezoning was not approved, but a good portion of it was. And, you know, that falls into relocation strategies. Low-density zoning. You may recall the house elevations project that we did with FEMA grant funding several years ago out in Seaford to get those houses out of the flood zone. So that would be a protection strategy.
Those road improvements, is that a revenue sharing project?
Yes, yes, it's revenue sharing.
So it's a typical work with VDOT, okay.
So just as a generalization, when you go from general recommendations and vision statements about things we'd like to see, which comprehensive plan has many of those, you almost always bump into a resource question.
Resource of?
Dollars.
Dollars.
You know, how much money are we prepared to put into raising roads?
Right.
Or how much money are we prepared to put into just about anything that's part of the vision?
Right.
Or how much money are we prepared to give up? It's almost, everything in here at some level translates into a resource question in your budget or your CIP, to state the obvious.
So rule of thumb, the number of days it takes to do a road improvement project to prevent flooding should not exceed the number of days the road is closed due to flood. I think, I think Allen's Mill Road, I think that road was shut down longer than we ever had the road flooded. So I don't know if that was a...
Well, you had to...
More lighthearted, don't, you don't even...
But you get into other things like how much inconvenience, how much inconvenience has caused one of certain roads.
Right, how much inconvenience has caused me to shut it down for the construction? You know, it's that balance, so, anyway.
We talk about the stormwater improvement projects that the county does in the, that are CIP projects. We have these TMDL targets that are established by the EPA and are in compliance, and we've got projects to keep us in compliance for the next several years, a couple of years from now. We expect the EPA will be coming out with new targets, in which case we'll have to come up with new stormwater projects. So this is really an ongoing item. Moving on to historic resources.
Beer, beer fair.
We talk about promoting public awareness of county's historic resources for the benefit of the county and its citizens. There are numerous... There are numerous history tourism-related organizations in the county coordinating with one another, as well as other regional, statewide, national organizations, we can multiply our resources to improve public engagement and increase visitation. Believe it or not, the historic resources inventory is, is a living, a living document, we're constantly finding new resources, and so you have an updated, we have an updated historic resources inventory, we have nine-hundred-and-fifty-two architectural sites that have been identified by the Department of Historic Resources, over twelve-hundred archaeological sites. We talk about county historical marker, sign marker program, there are a lot of interpretive signs in the county installed by Department of Historic Resources, James Town Yorktown Foundation, Department of Conservation, Recreation, Civil War Trails, these need to be inventoried, and we also talk about bringing up new signs, having new signs that tell the county's story, because when you, when you go to the state, you know, they have certain criteria that have to be met before they'll allow a marker to be built, so, you know, there is some value to the county doing some of this sort of thing on its own, and we've done some of that on our own here in Yorktown.
Would that be something that the Historical Committee can work on?
Oh, yeah.
That'd be a good project.
And right in line with that, Brian, I wonder if maybe that in part is something the Youth Commission can take on as, as one of their yearly projects, is doing some of that marker inventory, they do road cleanup and different things, I don't, that might be a whole new.
I suggest that we, as I bring that up, Tom.
I will, but I'll let you talk to, what's his name?
As long as you don't take it away from the homework.
Scott, Scott, I want to say, yeah, so you mentioned a Scott, and I'll bring it up, and we'll talk about it, so.
Safety vest, what's that?
Safety vest.
And, and Tim, who, who's responsible for the resources inventory? Is that one person in the county, one department?
Well, no, I mean, it's, there are a number of groups that do these, and we, you remember Amy Parker, who, Amy Parker was in the Planning Division, she wrote the Historic Resources chapter, she was very involved in all of this, but we do have others in the county, as you mentioned, there's a Historical Committee, there are a couple of committees, actually, volunteers, people who are involved in this kind of thing, so it's not like, you know, she's updating the, or doing the inventory, she would be doing it by herself.
You're not talking about one comprehensive inventory, you're talking about collections of inventories.
Well, I'm talking about, well, I am, we are really talking about, you know, looking at all these other signs that have been put up all these groups and having an inventory that includes them all.
I like that, I like that.
And we talk about promoting the development of high-tech global communication internet assets, we had a speaker come to one of our committee meetings from, I believe it was the American Battle Corps Trust, and she was talking about some of the cool stuff that they've been doing with their mobile apps and things, and so, you know, we need to, we need to help do more of that. Okay, moving on to housing, the committee felt that York County has always been and should always remain an attractive place for families to raise their children, for that reason, the predominance of single-family detached homes should continue, and, but the county does need to respond to the needs of the housing market, which reflect the increased diversity of household types in the U.S. But you see that first item up there, obviously the preference here for single-family detached Much of the county's existing stock of moderately priced housing is located in residential areas that were delivered, developed fifty, sixty, even seventy years ago, and would benefit from public investments and utilization, we've been doing a lot of this, CDVG grants, we did it in Carver Gardens, we're doing it, we did it at Lackey, we're doing it at Kerry Chapel Road, other areas that we need to look at this kind of thing, project program, Hubbard Lane, Panaman, Panaman Road area, York Terrace area, Yeppa County, Springfield Road, Milltown Farms, and Marla Road.
If you totaled all that up, how much is that in terms of number of units? So you said we do a lot.
Oh, of what we've done so far?
Yeah.
I'm sure the Housing Commissioner could tell me, but I don't know.
I don't think it's a lot, to be honest with you, relative to total over, overmount, so, I mean, it's an effort, it's an effort.
In the Carver Gardens, we did about sixty homes.
Yeah.
We're doing.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, is you talk about sixty, seventy, how many homes do we have in the county? You know, twenty-some thousand homes, right, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, so relative small.
But how many are fifty, sixty, seventy years old when they're in distressed areas?
You gotta be careful with the, you gotta be careful selling some of this stuff when it's, when in truth, it's just not.
Okay, we do some, we do some of that in the county.
Yeah, there you go.
I think we would all agree that the pace at which we do that kind of thing now, even though we do pretty well compared to some places, is certainly, we're not keeping up with the aging of the housing stock. That's another resource question, like, most of these end up being.
It's a resource, and it's also the legality of doing some of these things, if we want to pass amendments, or what am I trying to say? The county shouldn't get involved in individual housing unless it's a real issue of the safety, and that's what we do now.
So, so a conversation.
So then the houses get older, but they're not necessarily uncapable.
So a conversation that we have, some of us have had before is, you know, under Virginia law, you can have the property maintenance code, we have never chosen to do that.
Right, because that's what we're seeing.
There's a tension between property rights and that.
That's exactly, that's exactly where I'm coming from, too, you have to be careful.
But as your housing, as your housing stock ages, that becomes a bigger job.
I almost.
To which you're referring to is slum boards, you're avoiding, trying to avoid the slum board situation, so you maintain, you maintain a certain standard of housing so that people can live in something that's.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we could turn it around, and if we get requests from older citizens who are having problems with their house and need work being done, and they're unable to do it, if there was some way we could do something to help them.
The Housing Division does that quite.
And are we doing that now?
Yeah, the Housing Division.
If we're doing that, yes, what's his name?
Yeah, we do a lot of, I think I approved three propositions the other day for roof and air conditioning.
But see, that's important, I, I think that's something that we should talk about.
Well, there's the last bullet on the slide here, actually.
I beat you to it.
Where we talk about how we have all these senior apartments that are built for seniors, but most older residents, I think it's safe to say, would rather age in place.
That's right.
And stay in their homes, and we are doing some of that through the Housing Office.
Building a lot of ramps.
Building a lot of ramps, and so we talk about helping seniors who need assistance, whether that's financial or some other type of assistance.
How do we publicize that? I mean, how do we let the, the older population know that if they have a real problem, that they can come and ask us for advice or help?
Let me, let me stop us here right now, this is easy to go off on every subject we have here, these are individual subjects that have to be addressed at a different meeting, because right now, we gotta cover a lot of material, and we can't answer every question, okay? So I'm, I mean, I understand what you're talking about, Sheila, it'd be great, we have a program for, we do have programs for seniors, but this is part we're addressing in here, I want us to get through this book tonight, okay?
Good luck, go ahead.
So, let's go ahead.
It could take four years to go through it.
That's right.
That's right.
There's a lot of stuff, so let's stick on the subjects and let's get through this stuff, and then the individual, it should, you know, percolate in your mind, some knowledge or some issue that we could bring up later, later date, and address it through, through the budget or policy, so, okay, Tim?
Okay, moving on to public facilities, that includes schools, libraries, parks, public safety, tourism, government offices. One thing we talk about is standards of library excellence, and in most areas, the county is triple E, which is the best that you can be, but we do talk about the need for continued investments in collections and technology, needed to maintain that rating, or in the case of staffing, actually achieve that rating, with the Yorktown Library extension, we do actually meet the triple-A standard for facilities, and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. I mentioned placemaking earlier in the Economic Development element, it's also addressed in public facilities, in this case, we're really talking mainly about Yorktown and investing in infrastructure to enhance the visitor experience, the wayfinding, what signs, Wi-Fi, and other improvements, stage, that sort of thing. In the area of Parks and Rec, we talk, we had a healthy discussion at the Planning Commission about the conversion of athletic fields from natural to synthetic turf to provide for year-round use, to help us keep up with the heavy demand that's grown as we've gone to year-round practices, also helps in our sports tourism efforts, which can be, can be economically beneficial as well. And of course, it's a no-brander that we use the comp plan to guide the budgeting of county funds for CIP projects. In transportation element, we talk about pursuing federal, state, regional funding to enhance road capacity. Transportation element covers not just roadways, though, but also walkways, bikeways, transit, and air travel, there's some discussion of rail, even though we really don't have much to do, have much influence over what the railroads do. We talk about investing in emergency communications and response capability enhancements, again, going back to those CIP projects, the nine-one-one infrastructure, fire and rescue apparatus, we've done a lot, we have a lot of roadway needs in this county, but we're not able to address them all, we're not able to address them without federal and state dollars, through VDOT's smart scale projects and such, we've been able to get funding for widening the next segment of Route Seventeen, portions of one-seventy-one, and we need to continue doing that. In recent years, county's made sidewalks and bikeways a real priority, and this new emphasis on active transportation is reflected in the draft plan, and we have in there a walkways map showing not just existing walkways, but those that are in the pipeline, those have been approved through revenue sharing or other funding projects, and those that the county is actually doing on its own, and also other walkways that we think the county should be doing at some point over the twenty-year life of this plan.
I might add that sidewalks and bikeways were hugely popular with people who came in and spoke in a ranked high in their survey that we did, so I'll keep that in mind.
So there's some overlap here between transportation and the environment element, where we're talking again about elevating roads to mitigate sea level rise and stores, excuse, storm surge impacts on road network.
I have a question, yes, sir. The developer, developers decide they want to come into the county and build a cross-exchangeable size development, to what extent is the developer, through our history, partner with the county relative to infrastructure such as the road network outside the development? And I'm really talking about Rochambeau and.
Well, if it's a, if you're talking about transportation within the development, that's one thing.
Yeah, that's it.
Because we have rules in the subdivision ordinance, we have the ability to require sidewalks, bikeways, depending on the density of the development, and things like turn lanes into the development. When you start talking about off-site improvements, the Code of Virginia really doesn't allow us to require those, where we can require them is when there's some legislative action, like a, well, not, not a rezoning, because that would have to be proffered, but a special use permit, we could require as a condition of approval, or somebody, if somebody were to come in for a rezoning, take Smith Farms down there on Yorktown Road, they proffered a number of off-site improvements, sidewalk, you know, down Yorktown Road, sidewalk the other direction, a trail that runs actually through their property, but will be open to the public, and, you know, if, 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 if a development comes in and they need a rezoning, and it's going to have negative traffic impacts that, you know, you, and they don't proffer some kind of mitigation, they don't address it any way in some way, you can just say no and deny the rezoning.
To what extent is VDOT involved in that same question?
Well, any development, site plan that comes in for rezoning, especially, well, I'll get it started over, site plans are sent to VDOT for review, for a project that's going to generate a large number of trips, thousand trips per day, hundred trips in a peak hour, then our ordinance requires them to submit a traffic impact analysis. We review it, we send it to VDOT for their review, and they identify, you know, whether or not, whether or not the project works, or if some road improvement, well, what does word mean? Okay, if it has a negative, a negative impact on the transportation network.
All transportation has a negative impact, we're talking about.
Okay, let me start over, I guess. In a traffic impact analysis, the traffic engineer analyzes the existing conditions, and then what the conditions would be with the project that's being proposed, and the TIA is supposed to identify what improvements to the roadway network are necessary to mitigate those impacts.
To a certain level, a degree, the level of transportation.
Right, like bringing from level of service D to C, or E to, E to D, actually, level of service D is considered acceptable by VDOT.
I would say the core answer to your question is, in a county like York, VDOT is the controlling entity for site plan approval as it relates to transportation. We, we have some influence on it, but ultimately, they control, and even in cases where there's rezonings or use permits, think Commonwealth Green, where, you know, you all had a plan for where the road was going to go through, that was approved in a rezoning or whatever it was, and then years later, VDOT said, no, we don't like that, and even though it was in our legislative action, you know, it didn't happen, so in my experience, VDOT is basically in charge.
But VDOT doesn't do the traffic impact study?
They review the traffic study.
They review.
And they tell us whether the developer has adequately addressed the traffic impacts that are generated by the project.
As framed by state law.
Yes.
Some of it doesn't make any sense at all, I'm telling you, my, my district, I mean, they put three subdivisions in my district on an old country road fifteen feet wide, so, and hell, does that make any sense, but we ended up having to live with it because VDOT said it was okay.
You sponsored the road, didn't you?
Sponsored what, the road? Sponsored getting extra two feet on both sides, yeah.
In some states, in some states, there's law that allows a locality to acquire improvements that, you know, go beyond the property owned for, like a public right of way, but in Virginia, it's very strict.
You know, a great example of, Walt, is that Victory Boulevard, which is a major thoroughfare, that three, three of our districts are impacted by Victory Boulevard, in the last twenty years, the last twenty years, the only improvements that have been made on that road, even though hundreds, hundreds of homes have been added, have been made through proffers from the county, that's the only improvement, Ball Greens, Harper Station, Kilm Creek, you name it, and that's, that's the only improvement in over twenty years, because the state, you know, they can sit there and look at the books and wave a magic wand and say, yes, good, but guess what, it ain't good, and, and so we have to go in and scrounge around, and going to Tim's point, you recall that the state actually at one time had legislation that we were not allowed to even ask the question of a proffer, that may still exist.
That was a big one.
That was a big one, because of what happened in northern, northern Virginia, okay? And now we weren't, and so developers are going, great, just don't, if you come up and ask for it, guess what, then you got a problem, illegal issue, so I don't know where that stands today, but anyway.
That basically went away.
It did, because I know it was, it was crazy, it was, it was hurting us, so anyway, go ahead, Tim, let's go ahead, keep going through this.
Well, I'll move on to land use, which is the last, last element of the plan. So I know you all are familiar with the eighty thousand maximum build-out population target that we've had since nineteen ninety-one. we've had since the 1991 Comp Plan, one of the...
No, it's changed every few months.
Well, not really. It's, it's not a literal, I mean, it's not as if, well, as you've described it, as a notional, right, a notional figure. But at the, in the scientific survey that was conducted at the outset of this process, and in the, particularly the land use forums that we had in September 2021, growth and development was a big issue, a big concern on the part of the survey respondents and the attendees at those forums. And so the committee felt that it was necessary to keep this general target of 80,000 residents in place. And so that is still in the plan, as it has been ever since 1991. Another item that came out of the land use public forums was a desire from presidents of Skimino primarily, that the county have an area plan done for Lightfoot. An area plan is sort of a more detailed plan that goes into more detail than you can in a comprehensive plan, but their concern up there was that you've got, you know, probably 600 acres there on Lightfoot Road, mostly undeveloped or underdeveloped.
Owned by the pottery?
The pottery property and the Gock Capital Property together, about 600 acres. And so there was a really strong push from the attendees that the county have an area plan done for Lightfoot, so.
How does, how does the area plan play into the relationship between the Comp Plan and the zoning ordinance?
Well, an area plan is much more detailed than a Comp Plan is. So you basically have, you'd probably have to, you'd probably have to get a consultant to come in and help us with this. We obviously involve local residents.
I mean, it's other than being more detailed, what is it do as a directive?
Well, it depends on how you implement it through zoning.
Well, of course, everything dictates the zoning. I mean, zoning, zoning ordinance is a legal document, right?
Theoretically, like what some locality have done, if they've done that area plans, they could create an overlay district. And I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying that that's one way that you could address it. And then you create an overlay district and say, you know, development, you know, in this area has to meet these certain criteria.
But, but, okay, and this is, to me, very, very important, and I think for all of us to understand it, because people get, get all wrapped around the axle on the Comp Plan when we do something different, change it in the zoning ordinance, so we make changes. So we go into, I mean, over years, decades, we've heard this, people come in and go, well, why are you doing this, when, how can you build this, how can you put the subdivision in there and all that? With the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, it reflects what's permitted, you know, on the land. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I would just add that usually with an area plan like this, you're really going to do a lot of citizen engagement with the residents in that area. So hopefully, you know, the plan that you come forward would be very supported by citizens in that area.
Okay, so it's supported by the citizens, but, but, and this is something that's very important for everyone, especially District One needs to understand. You're in District One, you're part of the county that has five, total five districts. So things that occur in District One can be tilted towards the citizens' desire, but also has to support the actions that's being provided in the other three or four districts. You can't just have one district doing one thing and four other districts doing something else. And that's where I'm kind of concerned, is that we end up building something like that. I'm not saying this is a point of discussion at this time, but we start building in these, 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 I don't know what you would even call them, these various plans, but in the end, the zoning ordinance is what we, legally dictates what we do.
So I would just say...
Right, you just said, right, okay.
So I would just say, you know, I've been involved in area plans in, you know, other places. It's fairly common. I mean, what comes out of it is, you know, an open question. In addition to citizen input, I think, I'm pretty sure citizen input would absolutely need to include the owners of the real estate.
No doubt.
That are impacted. And the question is, sometimes what comes out of them is something that kind of everybody feels okay about, in which case, it's a good result. It doesn't always end that way. It's, it's maybe an attempt to drill down into what some subset of an area might be, but, you know, what happens in an actual process varies.
It's an expectation of people, of expectations of citizens in our government actions, based on, you know, we put input in, the comprehensive plan, or area plan, or district overlay, stuff like that, and then everybody gets all, you know, energized when we have to, for various reasons, have to change what we've got to do, and we go to the zoning ordinance, which is what a person that owns the property is going to have to deal with. Okay, they're not going to have to deal with all these other notional plans of what the thing should look like, it's their property. It goes back hands to property rights, right? And so I just, I'm just being careful here, when we start throwing out these terms, oh, we want to go do this overlay and all that, well, we could do an overlay over, over the whole county in various units, but all, all we're going to do is, I think, frustrate people in the end, because we're going to have to do what's necessary to make the land work for the people that own it, the people that live around it, and the businesses for our whole community as, as a whole. So, all right, let's go ahead, finish up.
Is there an area plan for the Lightfoot area?
No.
Okay.
Comp Plan's all we've ever had. It's all we've ever had. It's only came up with in the past couple of years.
Yeah, you mentioned the importance of an area plan, superposed over the Comp Plan, but there is none of this.
No, this, this issue only came up in the past couple of years, and there's no way that we could, typically, you do the Comp Plan, before you do area plans, you do the Comp Plan first.
And we're not, am I correct in saying, if, if the board adopts the Comp Plan, more or less as drafted, then with that imminent, then there would be an obligation to follow up with the area. That's, that's how it would work.
Yes.
But there is none right now.
There is none right now.
Say that again, Mr. Organ.
So, you know, if, if one of the specific recommendations in the Comp Plan that you adopt is prepare a detailed area plan for Lightfoot, then certainly the staff's going to come to you and say, okay, we made a promise to do this, this is how we proceed, you know, propose to do it. Our preliminary thoughts was it would need to include some kind of consulting planner and some kind of committee and stuff like that.
Tim, do you recall how that 80,000 number was, sorry, do you recall how that 80,000 resident number was calculated, how that was determined? Well, yes. At the time that we did the 1991 Comp Plan, the population was at about 40,000. Under the land use plan that was in effect at the time, based on the densities that were in that plan, and an assumption as far as person per household, it was determined that that plan could result in up to 135,000 residents. So at the outset of that plan process, there were a lot of surveys, well, questionnaires, really. We had a citizen questionnaire, we had a more detailed questionnaire that went out to Board of Supervisors members, planning commissioners, members of other boards and committees. And one of the questions was, you know, the current land use plan would allow the population to grow eventually to 135,000. You know, what do you think, assuming every piece of land were developed at its maximum allowable density? And what do you, the respondent, think is an appropriate number for our maximum build-out population? And 80,000 was by far the choice of, of the vast majority of people who responded, both the citizens who responded to the shorter survey, and the board members, commissioners, et cetera, who responded to the long survey. So, basically driven, yeah, by citizen and board, planning commission.
Sounds like not a tremendous amount of scientific record behind it, but more of a base on our experiences.
Well, it's not like it was a capacity analysis or anything like that, if that's what you're looking for. No, it's just a general feel that, you know, we're at 40,000, 80,000 feels about right.
All right, so, okay, that's fine, I just, again, just wonder how it came about. So, you know, the main mechanism to drive to that number is our zoning ordinances, right?
Right, it's the zoning, it's the amount of residentially zoned land and the allowable density.
Right, so does our, do you feel our current zoning ordinances that are laid out will match that target, or?
I have a slide at the end of the presentation that will address that.
I didn't mean to get in front of you, but okay, that's, that's good to hear. Because I'll tell you, I'll tell you right now, I mean, the land use and the housing is where I've spent most of my time so far in the, in the, in the book, and they're very, very tightly coupled, and they're very critical to York County's future. We've got a kind of, we've got a unique situation here, where half of our county is, is federal, that, you know, that, you know, military bases, we'll never be able, able to use, we'll never be able to have the opportunities for big industrial, like, like a shipyard, like a major data center coming in here to offset tax revenue, residential tax revenue. So if we're not careful with how we manage our housing growth, and if we grow too much, too fast, we're going to put ourselves in a, in a bad spot, where we're not going to be able to sustain our services if we're too densely packed in here. And we need to be really careful now, and I'm still doing a deep dive here with that , those parks, but that's from, I'm paying a lot, a lot of attention here, and the next Comp Plan needs to do the same thing as well, so just...
Tim, one of the nice things about Tim, and he was the Tim and Mark Carter and that group, okay, over the history, okay, is that they got a tremendous history, and, you know, Sheila, and Sheila and Walt, and I've been around long enough to heard, we've heard this thing how many times, right? And, and I, one of the first things I heard when I got here was 80,000, okay, that's going to be the panacea. And why was, why would the average, the average, why would the citizen review all up in arms over that? Because if you got to look at that period around 1996, about 1995, 96, to about 2007 and '08, all of a sudden, the population went nuts. What happened, it was, it was a big housing boom, and, and all of a sudden, we would end up with, I mean, we had just, we were growing at 5% a year. You, I mean, 5%, that's a whopping number, right? So then the, then the idea of the Board of Supervisors was, how are we going to control this? I mean, people want to know, how are you going to get it under control? You know, the folks were moving in, they liked it, and then they wanted to roll up sidewalks because they didn't want anybody else coming behind them. I mean, it's pretty standard, all right? So the, and this is before I got on the board, Sheila, I think Sheila and Walt were doing this, and it was the idea to take a look at the zoning map, this is where we took focus on that zoning map, how are we going to get our, our development under control? Some of the subdivisions, and Yorkshire Downs is the, one of the oldest subdivisions platted in this county, believe it or not, okay? And they didn't, they were platted out 30, 40 years before we even, before anybody else showed up. And so who was there to defend the county against overpopulation? No one, because it was the developer in the woods, that's all, and squirrels, raccoons, right? So then all of a sudden, this bow wave of development flushed, flushed across the county, and, and the population just took off. You just look at the map, and you can see the time. So you got it down to around three, three tenths of a percent, under 1%, which was well manageable at that point. And then you could do, you had to worry about the, the infrastructure, you could manage it. I mean, once you get above it, it's crazy. DC, that area up there in Northern Virginia, that's what happened to them, it was just every day you wake up and you'd see a subdivision kind of rolling across the mountains, so, or the hills. So anyway, that 80%, or 80, 80,000 number has been around, and I always thought it was a joke, to be honest with you. Like, because that's why I called it, in the Pentagon, when we worked these numbers, these are notional figures, because you're not going to stop at 80,000. You're just not going to stop at 80,000. The price of land will get to a point where people will come up and they'll start where they do, they start building vertical. That will happen in this county, I guarantee it'll happen anywhere, where people want to live here. Now, we're good, the important part, I think, of this Comp Plan is, well, we're good for about another 10,000 people, and then we're there, okay? Then we're at the 80,000. And so where are you going to put an extra 10,000 people in this county? Where, just think about where you'd put them. Lightfoot? You got, we got 80 acres down there in, in my district, they can still put a bunch in there. Look what happened to the Big Woods in Pecosin, they just showed 530 homes right up against Victory Boulevard. So where you, you've got to look at where they're going to put extra 10,000 people.
And my question is, can, can Pecosin afford that?
I don't know, I don't think, I know, but we don't want it to become our problem if, you know, we, you know...
I mean, it's a question that we need to think of in, in this comprehensive planning in the future, because, you know, and then what happens, when Sheila arrives, goes up another foot and a half, and those people in Pecosin have to move into York County, or the people in York County, you've got to find someplace else to live. These are all going to be part of that plan. Okay, Tim, where are we?
Number three on this slide.
I think you lost a bit of it.
We talk about conservation areas. We did hear several citizens speak about conservation. We dedicated one of the committee meetings, we had some outside experts come in and talk about conservation, and we have several objectives in the plan to talk about conservation. We talked about the Greenway proposal down there in the TAB area, the, around the Yorktown Road and Big Bethel Road. And we talk about conservation tapping into FEMA grants, maybe doing some conservation out in some of these areas that are prone to sea level rise. And so we address conservation, and not to the extent that everybody would like, I'm sure, I see Mr. Struble sitting over there, and he, he spoke to the committee and the commission, he was, he was advocating that we have a more, like a formal conservation program, and he can describe it better than I can, but, you know, basically have a, have a citizen board of some kind that would identify properties for possible acquisition, I guess. The committee, in the end, opted not to go forward with that idea. One thing, one reason, I think, is that we already have so much conservation land in the county, it's basically about a quarter of our land area, when you take in the New Canoo's watershed, the Williamsburg watershed, and some of these other areas. What's happened in the last 10 years is that a lot of, a lot of land has gone into conservation. Up there at Waller Mill Heights, where Colonial Williamsburg set aside about half of the land and donated it to, at the time, I think it was the Williamsburg Land Conservancy. I mentioned the American Battlefield Trust, they acquired the Eckert Track, 250 acres, came off the books, came off the tax rules. They acquired property off of Gooseley Road, or Crawford Road, sorry. They recently acquired about 150 acres of airport property that became, that declared surplus, you know, that we had designated for limited industrial development. And so I believe, I think the, I can't speak for the committee, but I think their feeling was that even though these are not the result of county efforts, if we have these private nonprofit entities that are addressing conservation in this way, and pretty effectively, obviously, then, you know, why do we need a county, a county board, an open space conservation board or, or commission? And the other piece of that is, as you'll see later on, the amount of land that's left available for development is relatively small. So...
I guess my answer to that question would be, somewhere in here, I can't find it right quick, but somewhere in here, there was, there was a list of available, developable land, number of acres, that, I saw it earlier.
About 7, 7,800 vacant, but not necessarily developable.
Understand, right, understand. So I guess my answer to that question is, all right, what's the plan for that 78, what's the vision for that 7800?
It's my last slide.
He did not, he did not pay me for this.
Very disappointed when they see this slide. Okay? Probably building up to that.
Go for it.
Okay, the last thing, we talked about this already, Fields is a good example, well, it's an example promoting the redevelopment, adaptive reuse of vacant commercial industrial sites. Again, Fields, Casa Pearl, Neil reminded me, Merrimack Trail was a horrible old blighted Texaco station, now it's a great oyster restaurant, Virginia Beer Company, that old stretch, Parkway Print Shop, I mean, it's, it's, it's been a real turnaround. And so what we need to do is go through the ordinance and look to see what impediments there are to redevelopment and adaptive reuse, because sometimes, you know, we can, we risk making the perfect the enemy of the good, we have these non-conforming sites, well, maybe they, maybe it's not even possible to bring them into full conformity, but if we can bring them closer to it, you know, and put a good, attractive business in there, you know, we need to find ways to do that.
And redevelopment is very expensive.
And redevelopment is very expensive, yes it is. And we were talking earlier about, you were talking about Route 17, and there was a regulatory piece of that. And we were talking earlier about, you were talking about Route seventeen, and there was a regulatory piece of that also where we created the Route seventeen corridor revitalization district, where we kind of relaxed standards for certain non-conforming sites along not just Route seventeen, but other commercial corridors to try to promote redevelopment. So just want to.
Before we get going further, I want to make a comment on the six hundred acres that you alluded to, Tom, currently owned by the pottery. You know, we all know where the pottery is, right? And that six hundred acres, if we were awake, when Tim Trent from Coppin and Canelo's gave a brief a couple of weeks ago, right now is underlooked by a development company called North Point that wants to build a mega, mega, mega complex of warehouses, okay? My successor and I have been looking at some of the stuff that we've already received from North Point, okay? We believe we have found some serious mistakes in terms of the numbers, okay? So one of the things coming out of today is I'm going to put, you know, all of my reputation on the line that we have a workshop devoted to that six hundred acres up there to make sure that we are not the victim of overbuilding. If you all know that there's Rochambeau that runs up parallel to the highway, I sixty-four, and you know what Lightfoot Road is, that big sweeping curve up there, right? It's one lane this way, one lane this way. The potential for an incredible series of accidents is there unless we make darn sure that what they're proposing meets both the existing zoning requirements and anything that might evolve out of that, because again, it's all, it's all part of growth, but like. More on that to come, but my point of it is, you know, there are some things, when you talk about one of the few virgin pieces of land up here for all practical purposes, six hundred acres is, is, is an incredible magnet for developers for one reason or the other. This happens to be mega warehouses, but like, so.
See what comes out of it.
And the next day or so, I, we are going to provide the board, the staff, the results of an analysis to show you that some of the numbers that were provided by the, either the law firm or the developer, probably a combination of both, are not correct, significantly not correct, so more, more to come. But again, it's all part of what Tim is talking about in terms of what do we have left? You know, we don't have much left in terms of acres.
Well, that's, I come back to my, when we talk about the plan itself, what are you going to do, Tim? What are you going to put ten thousand more people in this county? Where are you going to put them? I mean, I love to hear, I love all this painted slides and everything, but where are you going to put ten thousand more people? So anyway, go ahead.
Okay, the centerpiece of the land use element is the future land use map, which you see up here. Basically, anything that's in a shade of yellow or orange, brown is residential. Green is military, is a conservation. Tinta, red, is commercial. And industrial is shades of gray. This is really the main policy tool of the comp plan, apart from the goals, objectives, and implementation strategies. Identifies the preferred type of land use in each area of the county. And it's from this map that zoning, zoning flows. In most cases, in the plan that is before you, proposed changes to the land use map are intended only to reflect changes in zoning, land use, or property ownership that have occurred since two, twenty thirteen.
So it does reflect, it does actually reflect that, that result?
Reflects changes, right, since twenty thirteen.
We're not, we're not proposing in this any downzoning? Okay, I mean, potential for downzoning? Okay, good.
Or upsetting for that. One big difference between this future land use map and, and the one that's an adopted comp plan is that here we do away with the mixed-use overlay designation. Mixed-use overlay designation was established in two thousand and five. This was another item that was, it was an issue of great concern to many of those who attended the land use forums. And so the committee, in the end, recommended eliminating the mixed-use overlay designation, not eliminating the opportunity for mixed-use development, but just not identifying specific areas of the county as being specific, particularly appropriate for mixed-use development.
There's a difference, that makes sense.
Part of the concern.
As long as you don't do away with the opportunity for mixed-use.
Right, you don't do away with the opportunity, but part of the concern was, you know, we've had some residential projects that have been able to, have been approved, and they've been able to successfully argue that they were consistent with the mixed-use overlay, or they were consistent with the comp plan, even though the underlying, you know, land use designation may have been an economic opportunity, but they were able to argue that it was consistent with the comp plan because they're in one of these areas with a mixed-use overlay designation. Essentially adding residential to commercial that's already played, that's in place. Like Marquee South Pot, which is an entirely residential project, but their argument was that since there's a mixed-use overlay designation around that whole area, they're just adding the residential component, which is really not what the mixed-use overlay was ever intended for. It was for projects that have mixed, mixed uses, you know, within the project. Whittaker's Mill is another example of how the mixed-use overlay designation was used. So after a great deal of discussion, the committee recommended doing away with the overlay designation altogether, although they did want to have language in the plan that specifically notes that the Marquee might be an appropriate area in order to get some residential in there, some rooftops to support the business and maybe keep that project afloat. But there's no actual designation there. I, I just want to briefly cover the, the areas of the county, what the changes are in the land use map. So this is the Lightfoot area. The only changes here, Williamsburg Water Works has acquired a lot of land, including the Jackson Dorst Farm, which is like a hundred and fifty acres. And so really, the only change there, other than, I'll just show you. So you see a lot more green, that's area that Williamsburg, City of Williamsburg has acquired as part of their watershed. And we have projects approved since twenty thirteen, Kelton Station, Arbordale, the Arvers Town Park. And so the, the future land use map is, is, is proposed to be revised to reflect those changes.
Magentas, or whatever that color is, it's, that's business.
Economic opportunity, okay. So now we're down in the area we were just talking about. So this is the current twenty thirty-five future land use map. Again, I mentioned the Egger Track, also known as James Custis Farm, which was a part by the American Battlefield Trust along with, excuse me, two adjacent parcels. And then in the new future land use map, you see, again, more green, the Egger Track. And then we've had these developments since then, Tranquility, Marquee Hills, and Whittaker's Mill. I'm dying here. Thank you. All right, moving further south. Not a whole lot of change here. Again, Battlefield Trust acquired this property off Crawford Road. And really, the only change there, the Rose Hill development, just bringing the land use map actually ended the conformance with the existing zoning and what's been approved out there already. Down in the Grafton area, not much change at all, except with the elimination of that mixed-use overlay designation. And then we noticed that Dale Moore's mini store facility was still designated for residential, so we changed that.
Changed that, left it.
To general business. And down in the TAB area, one thing we noticed was that this York Manor, Bird Lane, Oak Lane, Oak Road, Oak Street, they're all, a third of it acre lots, and they're zoned R thirteen. For some reason, we had it in the comp plan, this medium density, should be high-density residential. Again, there's no effect on the build-out on that because those properties are all developed. And we also, the Harper Station project, which was mentioned, we changed to, to general business. And then, of course, removing the mixed-use overlay designation over Commonwealth Green. So the last map. What we're looking at here is vacant land in the county. Land that is either developed or it's set aside as conservation or military. And how it is, what land use it is designated for in this plan. And, excuse, we've got to make it. So what you see here is a lot of EO, a lot of economic opportunity there at Lightfoot. The Camp Perry Interchange, property owned by Colonial Williamsburg. Over here, the E B Riffa property, former state fuel, fuel farm. You see, as far as residential, you don't see much other than low-density residential up in various pockets of the county. And when you look at what's already in the pipeline, most of those areas are already slated for development. And a lot of what is left over is constrained by environmental factors. Talking about, see all this green out here, York Point, Baytree Beach area? Almost all of it is under four foot of elevation, which means it's sub-divided. You've got Chesapeake Bay RPA there, extending into eastern Seaford. You've got wetlands down here off of Dequesta Village in the Running Man area. McDonald property off of Lakeside Drive is, also has wetlands. So as far as what we calculate, and we might have been generous here, but what we estimated, based on the zoning that's in place, that you could get up to forty-three hundred future housing units. And twenty-five hundred of those units are actually in the pipeline currently. So we're talking about roughly eighteen hundred units after the pipeline has been cleared. Mr. Shepherd, you were spot on. It translates into ten thousand residents when you factor in, you know, persons per household, different, different housing types. So we're currently at about seventy-two. So if these numbers are close to correct, then that would mean eighty-two thousand population at full build-out. And you may be right, it might not be possible to, to get to it. When you look at the amount of land that's, that's out there, that's, that's available for development, able to be developed, that, that forty-three hundred figure might be high. All right, so I said that was my last slide and I meant it.
Okay, good, so.
Is that slide in, I don't, I didn't see the slide in the, in the book.
Not in the book at all. All right, so, so, so for this meeting, I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question at the end, okay? And Tim, you done, right?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Sheila, whatever she is. I'll tell you what, I want to take a five-minute break. A recess for five minutes. Okay, we're back after a recess.
Turn on the heat.
All right, so.
You crossed my territory.
All right.
Freezing.
Hey, Sheila.
I'm cold.
You want my jacket?
Yes, thank you.
Don't say it every day.
That's a gentleman, right there.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
Full service chairman.
Really?
Okay. All right, so we've heard the comprehensive plan detailed, Tim, thank you very much for that. It was, I know, there's no way you're going to get through four years in, in a couple of hours, you know? So, and then Neil, thank you, you got anything you want to add, Neil, at this point?
No, I mean, this is your work session to ask whatever questions or make any observations you have about the topic.
Okay, for the board, I'm going to go around and ask the board for any thoughts or inputs, but here's the one thing that I'm trying to get to, is that we, we need to, somewhere in here, we're going to have a public hearing, okay? And put it on the schedule. Now, in our, reading through the document, it's, I mean, you're just, if you're going to study it like you're doing right now, I mean, it could take months to actually study this thing properly, all right, to get through and all that. And that's not what I'm expecting, I wouldn't think any of us expect that. But one of the things that we got to keep in mind, this is the longest I can recall ever taking this long to get through a review of the comprehensive plan. It's been four years, a whole ton of people have been involved in it. And we really appreciate all the hard work that the citizens did and the analysis and the, and whatever. But it's never going to be perfect, it's never going to be perfect. And so in the final analysis on this, you know, we can sit here and try to make this thing perfect for the next ten years and it's never going to get there. And guess what? The requirements under the code of Virginia is that we just simply review the document, that's all we do. If we don't approve it, guess what? You're going to keep exactly what you got. So if you like what you got, then we'll keep it. If you want to go with this update version, which I always appreciate the update, then we can make, we make incremental changes as we've gone through. So if you think you're going to get here and we're going to fine tune this down, down to all the work that the people have done for four years and the planning commission and the public hearings and all that, it's just not going, it's, I mean, you can try, but it's just not going to happen. You'll be up in, up in Richmond somewhere and then the, the follow-on Doug will be down here. Guess what? It ain't going to change, all right? It's still going to be a problem. So we, if you've got questions of Tim or the county administrator, this is the time to think about that. But to put it in the context, if we want to get this, I would, I personally would like to get it approved through, after a public hearing, okay? Not during the public hearing, but we'd have a public hearing, get inputs. Unless there's some really tremendous change that's being offered, then we would just go ahead and approve it, guess what? Then the next board, when they come through, they can start reviewing it again and we make changes that way. So I'm going to start with Stephen. You got any questions?
So, well, you answered one question, I was wondering what the, the agenda was going to be in the next company meeting. So probably next meeting would be the public hearing, but you're not going to try to have a public hearing and adoption on, on the same night?
No, that wouldn't be fair, because I think people, I think people want to come in, want to get the inputs. And then, then from that group, if we get something significant, then we can make, somehow make, incorporate it. But for us at this level, this thing is like, I always think of like water going through charcoal, you know? Or you go through sand, you go through charcoal, and by the time you get down there, heck, it's drinkable. But I mean, you know, is it a hundred percent pure? Maybe not, but we'll get what we can.
Just to clarify, it's too late to advertise for the public hearing for the.
Right.
But I mean, I'm just talking about what we're going to get done.
You answered my question, we're not going to try to accomplish both at the same night, which is good. For the same reason that, that you said, I didn't think it was, was realistic to try to do both, so that's, that's good. I don't really have so much questions, I'm, I'm probably getting more as I get into it, but just want to go back and, my focus on this is to make sure that the comprehensive plan, that our plan going forth the next five years before we get into the, into the next one, is going to address, you know, I've, I've talked to a lot of folks in the past two and a half years I've been on the board, especially in the past six, six months. And the underlying theme that I'm hearing from folks is, we like York County like it is, we don't want to see it overdevelop. That dovetails nicely to my vision as well, because I've seen what overdevelopment happens. You mentioned North Virginia, I almost saw that happen in, in real time. So to have a comprehensive plan and a, and a countywide zoning ordinances to address that, to drive us to no more than eighty thousand-ish, good. I just want to make sure that the plan is going to accommodate that, address that, so that we, in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, whether we're still living here or not, we're leaving a county behind, that the residents have, have the same vision that we all have, I think, for it. So that's going to be my focus going forward. Again, not so much a question, but just kind of, this is where I'm at.
You do understand that it's massaged every five years?
I understand, right, right.
Okay, good.
Mr. Shepherd, I disagree with you, I think this is pretty close to a perfect plan.
I do, absolutely.
I want, I want everybody to take a, a chance to read through it. Mr. Rowan, you had a question about what the land use table was, it's on page two thirty-six, so please take a look at that. I think this is great, and Mr. Shepherd, as you always do, you always believe that public input is key. And we'll pour some water through the charcoal filter, so to speak, and, you know, get some public, get some public input. But this is a. But this is a pretty close-to-perfect document, I believe, so anyway.
Very good, your confidence is great. Thanks, super. Mr. Zarimba.
Yeah, I'm a short timer, as you all know, okay? But I haven't been censored to this point, and I'll speak my, my, my mind.
You always do.
Why the preamble, you always do.
Well, thank you for the support, okay? My thoughts, though, parallel Steve's in terms of development. Now, he emphasized people, eighty thousand people, okay? I wanna just talk a little bit about things that are not people, but they take up tons and tons of our space. One more time, with respect to the briefing that we received, Tim Trent, the attorney for Compliment and Zells, okay? There was an initiative, I think you all know, okay, that would take the six hundred acres up there in the Pottery's area and build mega warehouses, okay? Now, my successor and I have looked at some numbers that the developer presented to the county, proposed to the county. We found some arithmetic mistakes favoring the development, okay? So, mostly him, okay, Mr. Hallright, put together a matrix that I'm gonna send out tomorrow to you, okay? That will be the basis for a workshop that hopefully we can plan for too long, all right, to show the difference between what the real numbers are and what they have reflected. And give you an example. I know you all have driven on Rochambeau or Lightfoot Road, okay? It's fairly well-maintained in terms of what's there, but it is one-way north, one-way south, okay? And what you come up with, with the rolling numbers that have been presented to the county, and I know staff is evaluating those numbers, you have a relatively safe highway, okay? But when you throw in the numbers that should have been used for the analysis, you have close to eight thou, instead of three thousand cars a day traversing those roads, you have close to, if not a little bit more than, eight thousand vehicles traversing those roads, and you've got this big eighteen-wheeler mega warehouse up there, we've gotta take a look at it. We've gotta take a look at it, squeeze it out, use your analysis capability, and any others around the table that have a capability to take a look at things objectively and partially unbiased. There's no favoritism, I don't think there's any favoritism around this table, but it's gotta be looked at, because we don't want this, well, none of us will be on board that time, but by the time that five mega warehouses are built, and when accidents start to happen on Rochambeau or Lightfoot Road, we probably won't be around, okay? But the citizens of York County will be around, and they'll be the ones who suffer from one end to the other. And just want to point out that I will be with, a short timer over here with the white shirt on, no tie, and we'll set up, hopefully, a date to accommodate you and the rest of the board, get at this thing in the work session.
I have a question.
What do you think of this?
Hey, Walt, what do you think about this thing? You talked about everything else, but you don't, this is what we're talking about, okay? I understand, you're kind of, no, you're bringing up, Walt, Walt, you're bringing up a specific, a specific piece of property issue, and we're talking about the comprehensive plan.
Well, I thought we were, except my age, okay? Chill, I'm your senior, please, okay?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
The point is, I thought we were going around the table with comments.
No, that'll come later, I'm gonna have another...
Oh, we still have later to go, okay.
Yeah, then you can talk about it again if you want to.
Okay, good.
All right, so talking about the comprehensive plan.
You've talked about it twice already.
Okay, come on, you're twenty-one. You got my coat on, freezing in here.
I wanna say that I think that the staff and the people who worked on the comprehensive plan did a yeoman's job for the county, and there was a lot of input on it, and it is a planning document, it is not set in stone, and that's why we do it every, hopefully, it's supposed to be, every five years it's supposed to be completed. This took a little longer than it normally does, but I think it's an excellent piece of work, and I have to thank everybody who worked on it. I have no comments other than that, because it is just a planning document.
And again, my recommendation for citizens, if to, anybody who ever wants to run for office about in York County, this is a document you ought to go pick up and read. I mean, when I ran for office twenty years, twenty-two years ago, I went, the first thing I'd know more about my county, I went and got the comprehensive plan, studied in detail. It provided all kind of, just wow, and then, then I started asking questions of the staff, and it just, I learned so much about it. And this, it's a great document for learning about the history, where we're gonna, where we are now, and where we want to go. And I just think it's a great document, and the folks did a great job on putting it together, Tim and the staff, that all, I mean, this took a lot, a lot of work, as it sucked up so much time of our staff that it made it hard for other things to occur. So it was, it's a tremendous job, and we appreciate it. So, for the board supervisors, Tim Cross, obviously, can answer questions, can give us some input. Don't come into the board meeting and then dump it on us, you know, talk, you can talk to individual supervisors, talk to the staff, staff can help, we can help put little pieces and bits together and educate everybody, so we can get through this thing. And again, sometime in, hopefully this year, we'll be able, I'm hoping we'll be able to prove it after the public hearing. And the public hearing, folks, if you try to come in here and read this to us in three minutes, it ain't gonna happen, okay? I've seen people try to do that before, it just doesn't work. So find your favorite pet rock in here, and then talk to that, okay? That's the best influence you can have on the board.
I have faith that Mr. Kennedy can do a very good job of them.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, that's it, then, Tim, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we're gonna do the consent agenda. We have approval amendments for August fifteenth, September the fifth. We had items number four, the King's Villa sewer relining, phase four. And then we have the ratification of the declaration of a local emergency, which we had recently because of the storm. E-Board members, which discuss any of these. Seeing none, then a discussion, if none are being pulled, make, I have a motion. Motion's been made, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Motion made by Mrs. Knoll is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Zarimba?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we have no new business, so I'm gonna open it up now for a discussion. We'll start with Stephen.
So, Rob, I'd wanna recognize you and your team. I brought a lot of stuff in the past few weeks, action items that, variety of different things, too. We've had some ditch issues, we've had some drainage issues, we have some signage issues, we've had some shrubbery issues, clearance, so forth, and your team has jumped on that and taken care of our residents pretty quickly, and I just wanna say thank you for that, and I got a lot, you know, feedback from the residents who came to me, said, hey, some help, your team helped out, and they appreciate it, too. So I just wanna recognize you and your team for that, and I'm sure we'll be bringing you more, but thanks for all your help so far, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I'll pass the words along.
Yep.
Let's see, Sheila?
Yes. This month is October, and October is Cancer Awareness Month. And as a survivor, I am trying to get the word out to everybody, all the women and the men excluded, to have mammograms if necessary, at least be checked by your doctor to make sure that you don't need one. But sometimes your lives are busy, and you say, I'll do it tomorrow. Mañana, 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 but you can't do that, you really need to pay attention to it. And I guess I'm saying this because I just got a call from my son about my daughter-in-law. She's been diagnosed with breast cancer.
Sorry to hear that. Very sorry to hear that. Okay, Chad?
This being October, we have Yorktown Day coming up, October nineteenth. I encourage all the citizens to come on out to Yorktown and celebrate the victory at Yorktown, so, thank you.
Okay, Walt, do you wanna go over your project again?
Just a few comments, and it's, we've heard Tim and Mr. Cross give us a great briefing with respect to the proposed plan, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that is a very comprehensive plan for the county. What I mentioned with respect to the six hundred acres up, what is now the Pottery's land, is one of the specific things that is on our plate, or will be on our plate, to preserve or do whatever. And at some point in time, the board and the county staff has to get down into weeds when things, where things are, were happening, whether they're consistent with the comp plan or not. And I just want to emphasize, you know, what currently is the Pottery's, six hundred acres up there, if you were not sleeping, or if you're somewhat awake, or were here, Tim Cross gave us a presentation a couple of weeks ago emphasizing all the positive points of what Compliment and Zells is getting paid for to do.
All right. Trent. You said Tim Cross, I think you meant Trent Trent.
I apologize, it was Trent. Yeah, yeah.
All right, we good?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Two things I wanna cover. One's kind of interesting in that it addressed some of the issues that you're talking about. In 2013, the General Assembly passed a bill that allowed the local governments to get together here, and a transportation bill that resulted in all the transportation projects that you're seeing. Now, these have been advertised as the largest transportation projects on the East Coast of the United States, the largest in the history of infrastructure, largest in the history of Virginia, and they're into billions of dollars, okay? Ninety, I wanna say ninety-six percent, it may be a little bit lower than that, but ninety-six percent of all the revenue to build these projects are coming from the municipalities of Hampton Roads, okay? Varies number from fourteen to seventeen depending on the organization you're dealing with, but we pay for it through sales tax, we pay for it through, there's part of that sales tax, and gas tax, okay? And it's pretty, it's pretty amazing, it really is amazing. The only place I've ever been where I saw development like this on road projects was actually the state of Florida. I'd seen, I've seen them, you know, up at DC, you know, the big spaghetti bowl thing you got going on up there, but man, the huge projects these, this tunnel, new technology, we bought a seventy million dollar boring machine, we've done, we've built a high-rise bridge, and there's still more of it to come. And all this, though, the citizens are the ones that stepped up and said, okay, we gotta have it done, and man, did it take, it was an effort. It was just incredible effort, and it cost some of the elected officials their positions. And I always think of Mike Watson, he stood up for it and voted for it, but then unfortunately, he was, he lost the next election, and that's, we've had subsequent elected officials that position. Well, it's important, do we wanna, how do we, how do we feel about this stuff? And, you know, people that come in here go, well, okay, this is not so bad, we're building some construction, we'll get through it. But for those of us that have lived here, when you couldn't even turn up seventeen, because the only one that came up seventeen because hardwood mill, I mean, it was jammed up, okay? And that's a sixty million dollar project to get that road developed, all right? That came from state money, and then, you know, we're sitting here worried about, I remember the first project, you know, I-64, we're gonna just widen a little bit of it, very first stage one project, and then, he was the mayor of Hampton, Wallace, and he's not there now, but, but he said, we need to throw ten more million dollars in there, and then we could just add an extra lane, and we'd be good, we'd get the project going. All the municipalities represented, yes, let's do it, and we got it done. And now, we're at the point where the state has stepped up and provided funding to close the gap from here all the way up to Richmond. And then, we didn't think that would happen. It's the willpower to step up. Now, I'm saying, I'm giving this preamble to all this because, they come up with a, they being the engineers and the people that work in the HR TAC, which is the Hampton Road Transportation Accountability Commission that fund these things, have come up with an idea, okay? And that for three tenths of a percent, okay, on the gas tax, I think it's a sales tax or gas tax, one of the, I think it's the same, same, yeah, three tenths of one percent added to the gas tax would generate eighty-four and a half million dollars a year, okay? That money could be designated specifically to address all feeder routes into sixty-four throughout all of Hampton Roads. Think about that. That would include, like what you're talking about, Walt, we need a, we need a direct line right from, from whatever that big factory or whatever it is, a storage facility, right into sixty-four. Victory Boulevard, seventeen, any road, even the ancillary roads that feed into it could be funded, and how is, you go, well, how is that possible? It costs a lot of money. Well, the thing is, eighty-four and a half million dollars today, okay, could be used in bonding, which we do, and once you've got that source identified, it then generates from here, from James City County, Williamsburg, McCosin, York County, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Southampton County, you name it, all of them, okay? All those roads feeding in to those, into the sixty-four and six sixty-four would be built, okay? Now, you go, God, this takes forever. No, by twenty-twenty-nine. Think about that. We're sitting here scrambling, fighting over every little scrap of dollar we can get from VDOT to help pay for roads that we don't even own in this county, and yet here's an opportunity, okay? Now, I'm bringing this up because I had, obviously, I think it's a great idea, okay? The point is, is that if you get to three tenths of a percent, and you gotta get it from Richmond, if not from Richmond, you gotta get the authority from Richmond to be able to do it, okay? You're going to Richmond, bubba, okay? And so, that's something I think is pretty exciting, because we build the tunnels, sixty-four widening for over two hundred miles, road miles, over two hundred road miles, and we've done it ourselves here. What, how nice would it be for people to have to drive on all these routes around here? Over in Virginia Beach, they got a mess, you go to Hampton, and they got a mess, we got a mess in Hampton, right here, trying to get up on six sixty-four, and we got our problems. How nice would it be if we could just solve that for three tenths of a percent on the tax rate? Now, that's gonna take some, that's gonna take some, it's gonna take some doing, because people have to have the courage to make that happen.
Is it the tax rate, or is it on the gas?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be on, it's the tax rate.
On the gas.
Sales tax, the sales tax. Right now, we pay, we pay point seven percent on the sales tax, and that's what funds all these projects today. By adding that three tenths, we get all these other projects. So, I'm laying that out there, because I gotta talk to a few other folks, and we'll see what we can get done, okay?
One big takeaway from what you shared about the projects built out so far that was funded, ninety-six percent for the municipal, local municipalities, it shows an ability for us to be fiscally self-sufficient without having to be dependent upon finances from the federal government in any strings that come attached to that as well. We can take care of ourselves if we have the will and the need to do so. So it's encouraging to see that, that we can, we can roll our own and not be dependent upon other sources, so.
And to underscore your point, is that if, you know, these roads, everybody thinks is the federal highway system, right? They were created under the Eisenhower, you know, and all that. Guess what? Federal government's hardly given us any money, I mean, any money. We get it from the state or we get it from ourselves, okay? But very little, if any, I mean, it'd be, it'd be under a hundred million dollars for billions of dollars of projects. Okay, so that was that one. The other one, I wanted to talk to, let you guys hear this. Neil, you, not a year ago, September fifteenth, you passed us this thing, it's about the, what is this, Queens Lake project, okay? Now, one of my concerns, and one of our responsibilities as supervisors, not only to represent our district, but represent our whole county, is that when I look at this Queens Lake project, it, I'm a little uncomfortable with what we're, what we're about to take on here, or proposing to take on. You've got a, you've got a situation where we've got a neighborhood that was built, okay? They got a lake up there, they got a dam, they got a spillway, they got a state road across them. Of course, the state road's not ours, okay? That's gonna be a state problem. But, years ago, we got into this discussion about taking over responsibility for BMPs throughout the county. Now, I look at this, I step back and I look at it, and we gotta be responsible for how we're spending money and how that's gonna affect the county, and, you know, us going, we're gonna go in and buy it, we're gonna own a dam, we're gonna own a spillway, and then, then, then what about the other, the other BMPs throughout this county? I got neighborhoods down here, and we did a one study years ago, a study that said, okay, how much would it cost this county to take over all the BMPs? And it was, at that point, that's gotta be over ten years ago, it was gonna be four million dollars a year, which is about four cents on the tax rate. So, I gotta, I gotta understand a little bit more, why would I wanna be down here building a pond that belongs to another homeowner association and not supporting the rest of the BMPs and the process throughout the state, throughout the county? Can you tell us, give us a little insight here?
Yeah, so you're referring to a memo and a draft agreement I sent out a couple of weeks ago. This is follow-on to an earlier version of an agreement we had, it was called an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding at that point. So, the situation is, I believe Queens Lake is somewhat of a unique circumstance. Of course, the lake was developed as part of that residential development long before anybody had ever heard the word, you know, BMP, although it effectively functions as a storm... although it effectively functions as a stormwater pond for not only Queens Lake but parts of several other neighborhoods. The lake bottom and the dam are owned by the Queens Lake Community Association. Initially, they endeavored to design and construct repairs to the dam that were triggered by a change in the dam status by the state. And that proved really financially beyond what they could do. Our first approach was to kind of, through some tortured logic, separate the spillway and the, sort of the drainage channel from the dam and say, you know, county stormwater will work on the spillway and the, sort of the natural tributaries that flow into it. And you, Queens Lake Association, you know, have to fix the dam. Some of y'all know, we've been engaged with a committee there and we've been working in good faith with some folks and been to some community meetings. And early this summer, after I found out that they had attempted to bid the dam, they now have gotten wetlands credits, they've paid for a design of the dam, but they simply are never going to be able to do the repair work. And so, from a project engineering, design and phase construction standpoint, it's a whole lot more rational for county engineers to oversee the project separate from who can afford what. The, I believe it's the practical thing to do and the right thing to do. It is true that the people in Queens Lake would benefit more from the work than anyone else. However, there would be a general stormwater, you know, benefit to several neighborhoods that flow into that. It's also, I think, practically the way to proceed. I don't think it's in anyone's interest to allow that dam to get to the point where, you know, it might fail and the implications of that for, you know, property values and other things. But some of the things you mentioned as concerns are certainly my concern and the staff's concern. If you look at that agreement, I encourage everybody on the board to study it, the condition of county taking over the work is a one-time capital contribution from the association.
How much?
A hundred and ten thousand dollars, I believe, and an ongoing maintenance contribution of twenty thousand dollars a year. You said we would own it. Actually, what is proposed is, in exchange for us taking charge and taking the lead, their association would give us all of the easements necessary to both do the construction of the dam and the spillway, maintain the lake, but they would still be the fee simple owner. There's other reasons for that, like controlling who goes on the lake and things like that. I do believe, you mentioned some other situations in other places, I do believe that the time will come in this community where we will be confronted with other associations having challenges dealing with their stormwater commitments. Not big sophisticated HOAs, but there's many small ones that, you know, have five houses, eight houses, ten houses that maybe, under our development regulations, we made them dig a hole in the ground. And, you know, are they gonna have the resources in the future to maintain that? So a secondary idea with what we have done up to this point and what's in this agreement is, in the future, if I'm right about that, if some other association shows up and says, we got a problem, we need some help, and if it meets certain tasks, it does have a public stormwater function, the condition, the precedent for our assistance would be both a capital and an ongoing maintenance contribution. I think that's the formula for the future. You can argue about what the right mix is. There's other issues going on there that are somewhat unique. Now, we did get some good news. We got a million dollars of designated state money to go through the SLAF grant program. I forget what SLAF stands for, remember? Storm--
More Local Systems Fund.
Right. So that would be a pot of money that would sort of go into the till along with county resources and the association's resources. So I do think it's the right thing to do, I understand what you're saying. I had not scheduled that, obviously, that would be the chairman's call. And we're also working with the association, you know, they got their own group and different people asking different questions. But I had hoped to bring that to the board, you know, while I was still here.
And just presenting to you now the sort of consideration, you know, some scaled-down version, if it's a pond as opposed to a lake, things like that would be less expensive to maintain. I know, I know all of this works into the TMDL issue and that's where I think the broader, the broader benefit comes to the county because of our credits. We've been ahead of, we've been ahead of this total maximum daily load requirement for quite a while. But there's a point where we get, we get to really the end game and that's that last, the last few miles, that's gonna be real expensive. And, I mean, at one time, I remember when I first brought that to the board when, working on that PDC, where it was gonna cost more than our annual budget to meet the requirements of the TMDL load. So I just, you know, that's still interesting scope and stuff. And I don't have a, I don't have a position yet, but I just want to know what, you know, what we're doing because it does raise some concerns, okay?
Even my, if I may, sir. I think we all know what the lake, the lake looks like. So-called lake.
I've never seen the lake, I have no idea.
Where have you been, okay?
No, I've been all around here, the nineteen million dollar sewer project we put up there.
I'll pick you up, bring you up.
Nah, it's okay.
But it's not a real big lake to be in, okay? But there's a difference between a lake and letting that evolve into a pond, which will for sure evolve into a swamp, all right? And it's one of the most, we're a county, we are a county of there to there, all right?
Okay, great, Walt, I hear you, bubba, but I'm just saying--
Let me finish.
You want me to spend my money for my district, go up there. I bet me for a good reason.
Parts of the county, and we are a county, we are a team.
Right, okay, now I hear this. Hey, you want to conserve your county? Okay, well, you know, you better conserve some money to go with it.
Taxpayer dollars are involved in this.
All right, good, that's the point, okay, let's move on now. Okay, we're getting ready to go into a closed meeting, but before you do that, what I want to do here for us is that there's a list, there's a series of resolutions here that deal with the, with Mark Bellamy's appointment that we've made. It's publicly announced already. So there's our, the resolution, it's like for the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, resolution R thirty, twenty-three dash thirty-five, which appoints him. It gets our interim chief administrative officer, okay? I don't need to take all these into closed meetings, what I want to do, I want to get them done here. There's a Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail, that's R twenty-three, one thirty-six, again, Mark. Will participate in that, that's the interim. And then I think one of, no, it's not, Brian will be an alter. Okay, Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority has resolution R twenty-three dash one thirty-seven, again with Mark. And there's the Williamsburg Area Transit Authority Board of Directors, that's R twenty-three, one thirty-eight. And that includes Brian Fuller in that one, okay?
And John Sider is--
And John Sider, okay.
So we didn't mark off of that one because he's getting all the, all those other--
Awesome. And then there is, the last one is the resolution R twenty-three dash one thirty-nine to appoint Mark Bellamy as the interim county administrator, Heather Scott as the deputy county clerk and Diane Ingram as the assistant deputy clerk. So those are the things I just don't want to take in the public until closed meeting, we just get them approved. Now, any issues? I'll take a motion to, do I need to move each separately?
You want separately?
No, do not, so I take a motion to approve all five resolutions.
I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Zarimba?
I second it.
Okay, it's the committee, we don't need a second.
I don't know.
Okay, go ahead.
The motion made by Mr. Zarimba is to approve all appointments as submitted. Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Zarimba?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and Mr. Roan, you're taking this to closed meeting, please.
And according to section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one of the Code of Virginia, I move the board of supervisors convening closed meeting to consider a personal matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions.
Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Yes.